Not a single member of the board voted against that at that time. The last thing I want to say is, is I really hope that you all are reflecting on the decisions that were made, the processes becoming those decisions, how those were communicated to the public. And we'll be able to communicate to the public going forward, how that's going to be different. You know, people like to say we're in unprecedented times. We are, but the unprecedented time is not January till now. It's January for another four years and possibly longer. There are going to be many more illegal challenges from this administration on DEI, on climate change, on all sorts of other things that this community really believes strongly, you know, disagrees strongly with this administration on. We all as a community have a moral obligation to oppose those things, to not comply in advance, to not to make the scared decisions. I think that this time, the process, the decision-making process was failed. I would like to see it be better in the future, and I'd like to understand how it will be better in the future. So I'd love for there to be some reflection and communication to the community on the next time we get into legal order from the Trump administration, how are we going to respond to it better? Thank you.
That's everyone that's signed up there.
Yeah. No, that's okay. Go ahead and come up, and then when you're finished, you can go ahead and you can sign up later.
Hi, I'm Tracy Buneier. I'm a parent and have two kids in the school district. And I just want to start by saying, I mean, all of you, this is a life of service, and you dedicate a lot of time and energy to this, and we all really appreciate it. And I know it's probably hard when you're here doing this labor and people aren't showing up, and then we show up when we disagree. But I really appreciate the opportunities that you've given the community to engage in discussion about this. It means a lot. I also feel similarly to the earlier speakers that it was a mistake to suspend the policy. I'm glad it's reinstated. The couple of points I want to make is, one is that, you know, when you walk in the library tonight, the sign above the library is about standing up to bullies. And that is a real core value at Haldane. That's why we have the anonymous reporter tool. It's why we have the buddy bench. You know, we teach kids this, you know, be the I am kind from kindergarten and pre-K soon. And I think as a, as the grownups, right, we need to do the same. I think it's really, really important that we stand up to bullies, and that's very much what this is. The other thing that I, I think a lot of people are struggling with, I'll try and speak for myself, but having had conversations with people, there was something kind of disingenuous, I think, about the recording, at least that I watched, of that part two of the meeting. There was a kind of attitude of like, it felt a little bit like theater or a farce. Like, yeah, you know, let's reconsider our policy, you know, let's see if it's really serving us well. And in your hearts, like, I don't actually think that everyone on this board feels like, yeah, you know, the policy's probably just not serving us well. It felt like you're just kind of saying the thing you need to say for the recording so you don't get busted by, you know, the toddler in chief. I don't know. It felt very different from, I think, the values that all of you tend to bring to this work. And I know I'm repeating some of what I said yesterday, but I do, I want it for the recording. The other piece is, I think the line was very much, "We're going to suspend the policy, but the practices will not change." That is cold comfort. Okay, and I said this yesterday. If your employer says, "Hey, we're going to rescind or suspend our payroll policies or our maternity leave policy, but don't worry, you know, all the practices will be the same." No one is buying that. That does not feel good to kids in our school, doesn't feel good to parents. And it may be true, but I mean, no one's going to sign on the dotted line when somebody tells them that. So I really, I hope that we can like continue the conversation. And I hope that, you know, all the parents that have spoken up, that you guys hear, that this is very, very important to us. We understand the fiscal risks that, you know, we don't want that so. But I think there needs to be a little bit more for decisions like that. Thank you.
Are there any comments at this point? I didn't sign in, but I go. Hi, everybody. I'm Sasha Bureau. I also have two children in the district. And I work in academia in the DEI space. And I actually just wrote something out that I think is building on what I've heard some people speak of tonight, which is that language matters and the words that we use matter. And I'm just right now like reading the Haldane mission statement, right, "to provide the high-quality education in a supportive and nurturing environment that fosters academic achievement, character development, and lifelong learning, preparing students to become successful and responsible citizens." And I think that I just want to add that I know, and I also appreciate the work that you all do. I know that difficult decisions are a part of leadership. But thinking about language, they shouldn't ever require us to abandon our values. So reinstating the DEI policy is a really important thing. And it reaffirms our responsibility to ensure that our children are seen, that they're supported, and that they're valued. But now, more than ever, this isn't performative politics, right? It's a moral imperative. And so I teach Aristotle. I'm a big fan of following the lead of the moral exemplars. So what are other districts doing? Follow the guidance that's provided by New York State, responding to the real need of our students with care and integrity and courage, right? Because I think maybe to add here as well, we need to, in this space for the next few years, really be scenario planning. And that means thinking ahead to what difficult decisions might arise again. This is just one bump in the road, and there will be other challenges. And so, you know, in those moments, I'm really hoping that the community, as you're hearing from us, right, is standing up for what we value and that the board will do the same. And I think I'll just leave it there at that. Thank you very much.
I first just want to thank you for all the conversations and for the time. It's been, it's been, you know, very educational for me to hear your voices, and I just, I really appreciate everyone's time, you know, and being willing to have those dialogues. I think, I think, I guess I just had a few things to say. Just starting out with like, this DEI policy is something that is so fundamental to our community and to Haldane. And I think that was sort of what took, you know, everyone aback when all of a sudden it was, and I know it was just suspended, but just the fact that it was, that that happened so quickly. I know based on the conversations that you were relying on counsel and advice from that. And just thinking about that, I'm thinking about, like, what more, like, you all could have asked of counsel, right? If we're dealing about, like, what is the risk that we're looking at? What is that risk? Why, and why is New York State saying, "You don't have to sign, you don't have to comply," right? And what is the language that, like, they're citing as problematic in our DEI policy? Is there anything in there that actually discriminates? The answer is no, and therefore you're still, you know, you're still in compliance with Title VI. So those are just some sort of questions I'm thinking about. I also understand there was a question about what were the other schools doing? And it seems like maybe counsel gave you just the list of the schools they guide rather than the list of schools, you know, everywhere else. And so maybe next time we can, you know, cast a wider net and see, you know, what those other schools are doing. And then I know everything was rushed and there wasn't a lot of time. But those are some, some of the things that I'm hopeful next time this question comes around that is so, you know, so, such, such a part of the community that there's just a little bit more questions asked before a decision is made.
Right? Any other comments? Now, next thing on our agenda is information reports, right? So these are financial reports that the boards will act on at our next, well, act on at our next business meeting. And then following that, we're going to move into the consent agenda, starting with consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. There are, actually, I want to make sure I'm doing this at the right place. Yes, there are a couple of things here that I think we want to definitely raise some awareness to. One is the acceptance of the donation to the athletic department for construction and labor from Nicholas Sakatos and John Van Tassel for their time and generosity. I actually can't remember, those are, the details are in executive content, but what you can see from that resolution is that those two folks and the people that they work with are making donations to the district valued at over $15,000 as part of the softball dugout. This particular softball dugout project is actually, I think, real representative of some of the great work that happens at Haldane because it's a combination of funds that were raised privately by the softball team, contributions from votes from the public, so Nicholas Sakatos, John Van Tassel, and then the district also contributed a share of money for the softball dugouts, which are looking kind of nice, yeah, and actually sent to CSR.
No, just thank you. Thank you to the, to the district and everybody who, um...
And then I think the other thing that we have on here is the approval to ratify the agreement between the Board of Education and the Haldane Civil Service and Bullies Association. I don't know if I'm the person to speak most eloquently about those negotiations, but my understanding is that everybody entered into them with good intention, a sense of collaboration, and a real intention to accomplish really what was really best for the union employees, the CSE employees, as well as for the district. And it was a successful negotiation.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and the board is delighted to be approving that three-year agreement now. So I think that was everything on that part. Yes, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Next, we have the consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So this is also, really, there's also something also very exciting on this consent agenda, which is the appointment of our new Director of Pubule Personnel Services. So I'm gonna, do you have any?
Great. I'll just give a quick summary. We had a very extensive process. We attracted well over 40 qualified candidates for this position, so it was very competitive. I'd like to thank Josh Elder and the admin team and the teachers that all served on committees. At the very early stage, we involved Dr. Duffy in the process, the screening process. Then there was a committee interview with faculty, combination faculty administration, an administration level of interviews. And then, of course, there was a board interview and very thorough reference checks, which were outstanding. So gives me great pleasure to introduce Erin Pique, our new, well, not official yet. I'll give a quick background before the board votes, but Ms. Pique serves as a secondary supervisor of special education in the Mayapac Central School District. Prior to this, she was a principal of an alternative high school and worked as a special education school improvement specialist at Duchess Bosse's. And she began her career as an elementary and middle school special education teacher in New York City. She brings a very deep commitment to supporting students, families, educators, along with very solid experience with special education and school leadership. She has her bachelor's in art and law and policy from Dickinson College and a master's in special education from City College. She has all her certifications and comes very highly recommended. It was a pleasure speaking to her references, and I did include them for the board's review. So you could read some of those comments, and I'm sure you have. So we wholeheartedly recommend her as our Director of Special Ed. I also would like to thank the Mayapac Superintendent Christine Tona, released her from her agreement early so, so Ms. Pique could start with us on July 1st. There was a clause that they could have kept her through August, but as a courtesy, they're releasing her, and we're grateful for that.
So I'm going to vote, are you willing to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay, all right. Let me take the vote, and then you can say them as a new DPS term. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, all right, please come up, yes, so.
So thank you very much, and thank you for the kind words. I'm really excited to be a part of this community. I've enjoyed the entire experience from start to finish throughout the interview process. I've heard amazing things about all the great things you guys are doing for kids, and I'm really excited to be a part of that. So thank you so much for having me, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah.
For those of you who, it's your first board meeting, one of the things that the board really likes to do is when we appoint somebody, is from time to time, we've done teachers and other people, is that we'll invite them to join them and to enjoy, to, we invite them to join us. It gives us a chance to meet them and for them to introduce themselves to the community. And it's a, it's not, I don't think it's that a super typical tradition at school board meetings, but it's something that we really enjoy doing. And so we're really happy that Erin has the opportunity to come and join us tonight. Thank you. Congratulations. All right. So, I'm moving into unfinished business. So may we, so this is what I think a lot of people are here for. May we please have the recommended action to approve, approval to reinstate policy 3430, diversity, equity, inclusion, and inclusion.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby reinstates the Haldane Central School District Policy number 3430, diversity, equity, and inclusion, as adopted on December 20, 2022.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And this is where we, I don't know if anybody...
I'd like to have an opportunity to, to make comments or say, this is absolutely the time to do it, yeah.
Yes, I would like to address the people in the community who have been feeling deeply distraught by the vote two weeks ago. This has been a distressing two weeks. I've been terribly on edge and unsettled, and I know a lot of you have been too. The alarming things sweeping through the nation came here to our town, and we are not immune. And I think this issue has provided a lightning rod for all of our combined angst. School boards have long been at the forefront of political issues because our schools are a microcosm of larger sociological trends. But as our nation gets more polarized, the issues school board faces become more fraught, more emotionally charged, and we're seeing that happen. So that said, I want to say that I have had the most patient, respectful conversations with so many people around the community over the last couple of weeks, just seeking to understand the process. So I regret not communicating more about the future of our diversity, equity, and inclusion policy months before the vote. A lot of us in the school community knew that the current presidential administration takes issue with diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we should have been talking about how to handle it when our school community was faced with it. I, I had not realized, well, I think I want to say here that if we had been communicating about it, I would have learned that suspending the policy would cause just as much dismay as repealing it. That was quite unexpected for me, because in my being, the decision at the time was not based on any real desire to cut the policy, but was a pragmatic choice to give us time to address the suggested legal guidance. We are different from other schools in that we wrote our own DEI policy, and most other schools in New York State adopted the Erie Von Bosse's. So there was something specific in our policy that our lawyer, lawyer flagged for us that was different from what other schools were experiencing. It did not feel at the time that I was losing my convictions or was acting in any kind of unprincipled manner. It honestly felt like, oh, good, here is middle ground, there's an option here. We can take this pause, we can take time to consider any changes to the wording of the policy and to consider any threat to funding, which again, at the moment, was very real at the time. And I believe we have to get a real sense of support in the community before deciding that it's okay to go ahead and forego that funding. As you know now, two days after the vote to suspend the policy, the federal court injunctions now mean that there's no imminent threat to funding, and I'm pleased that we can restate, reinstate the policy in full. If I had thought for one moment that students' rights to equal treatment would be threatened, I would not have considered the option of suspending the policy. Let's remember that the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy was not mandated. Haldane chose to write and implement our own policy because it reflects our school culture. It incorporates values that the school embodies, and it provides a way to crystallize, among other values, these. Commitment to equity and providing opportunities for students. Engaging in inclusive and culturally responsive teaching and teaching topics from multiple perspectives. Fostering tolerance and respect for cultural diversity. Providing all students with equitable, equitable access to programs, services, and opportunities for success, and allocating resources accordingly. Fostering family and community engagement practices that are based on mutual trust, confidence, and respect. Encouraging participation from all stakeholders and reducing language barriers and focusing on the well-being of the whole child. So I see this as a moment that we, as a school community that holds these values dear, can reaffirm our commitment to those values.
I appreciate your prepared comments, Michelle. Those are lovely. I do, just commenting on some things that we've heard this evening. And I think it's, I hear deeply, and I'm curious about the call to investigating the processes whereby we come by making decisions. We've had the opportunity, some of us to be on the board for longer than others. And I do think that, you know, we have certain ways of, of, we have policies and procedures for the way we conduct ourselves. And one of those sort of policies is that we do, I think, sometimes, because we fundamentally agree in a lot of things, don't have some conversations in public that we probably could, even if we don't need to inventory an agreement about something. I think it's useful for us to do that, because not only does it open the opportunity for community members to come in and weigh in, but I often find that when we do engage in those conversations, that I either learn something about how I think or my mind is slightly changed in those circumstances, even, again, if we're aligned. Case in point being our recent budgetary conversations, which I think a certain number of the board members really felt strongly that we should go to the tax levy limit. And I was persuaded that there was considerable wisdom in doing that. And with this particular policy, you know, it's, it's surprising to me in retrospect, how it felt like a policy conversation that we've had about other policies in a way, that it did not, even in, we understood the impact of it, but the kind of the procedural nature of the way we do things, the necessity in one way or another to go through a process whereby we review and typically state with mandate that, you know, we suspend something, and then we have several readings, and then we repass it, and there's just a procedure in place that we follow, you know, overall. And that, you know, the moment, every moment calls for a particular kind of leadership. And from my point of view, I think, thinking about what leadership means today versus six years ago, when I first joined the board, is considerably different. And that's, so it's certainly an opportunity for soul-searching, because I think all of us on the board have been in a position in which I'd had to make decisions that I absolutely did not believe were true or the right way to do things in my heart, based on my values, but that in the grander scope, in one way or another, of who we're committed to, who we represent, and are, quite honestly, sometimes very difficult to honor, commitment to nonpartisan leadership at the board level can be very complicated, you know. But this process of working over the past six years like this, it has been a way for me to open my heart to a lot of people who I think I fundamentally never would have engaged in conversations about a number of topics. And despite the fact that I've had many topics, conversations about this topic. And I, we're going to grow as a board, the members that move forward with this from this, and I guarantee that we will investigate and be more transparent, because I think that we need to be.
I don't, I feel like I've talked so much. I think the one thing that, I mean, this has been said in some other circumstances, but I, I'll say it again. I certainly, I certainly, you know, I've listened a lot and understand a lot of the concerns about the process that we went through. I think one of the things I talked about last night, and I've talked a little bit to the board about in terms of our retreat for the summer, is just really to think about, you know, to reflect on, you know, this, how this came about and how, wanting to think about sort of like, I like, I'm sorry. Communication, connection, I think with the new incoming superintendent, it's a time for us to reflect and think about that. I think, I think the thing that's been hardest for me, so I'm just going to talk about me. So I do wish in the moment that we had had more of that conversation. I know one of the things I've said to, I think, other board members one-on-one is I think is typically, we are better at doing it than we were that, that night. And I think it is a really useful process. I think it's a useful process for us, and I think it's a useful process for the public, right? For us to, to have those conversations, even though I think, because we work, we've worked together for a long time, and I think we share a lot of the same beliefs, a lot, a lot of times we feel like we can make those decisions without those conversations. But I would agree with Sean completely that making that, you know, having those conversations more public. Publicly and more clearly, I think, would be a good thing for us to do. I think there are opportunities to think about, you know, connection and communication. I think the thing that's been hardest for me is just some of the comments about, some of the harshest comments. And I think if people really understood how hard this board works historically and works, that those are, those are a little bit hard to swallow. But definitely, there are certainly, you know, these are the kinds of situations that we want to, there's a lot for people to be focused on, right? For all of us to have spent so much energy on this particular topic in this particular community, I think was not necessarily, I understand, not to say that it shouldn't have happened, but I wish that all of that energy could have been expended on, on, on other things. And so avoiding these things within our own community so that we can take our resources and focus on things that I think are, are truly troubling would be a good way for us to go, so. All right, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So for the new business, we have our CSE, CPSE recommendations. May we have the recommended action?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the committees on special education and preschool special education as presented.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is just information, so what the board had with a schedule of potential meetings that actually the, like, one of the, the things for us to be thinking about, and I think we don't need to talk about it tonight, it's been a long meeting. I also want to have a chance to present it to Dr. Duffy, is Megan and Carl and Catherine looked at sort of board meetings over the past couple of years and what typically happens in November and December. There's the possibility, at the same time, that people are busy with the holidays and going to school concerts and doing other holiday things. November and December might be months where we could have a single board meeting instead of two. I think before we make a decision about that, we want to consider it ourselves. And I certainly want to get Dr. Um, and I certainly want to get Dr. Duffy out. That's, I think, Megan and Catherine and Carl for putting those, um, uh, those calendars together for us to think about uh, for next year. And then next is the approval of the Westchester Putnam School Board Association slate of officers and directors as well as the budget for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six meeting.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education casts a yes vote for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Westchester Putnam School Boards Association nominating committee slate of officers and directors and a yes vote to ratify the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Westchester Putnam School Boards Association budget.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Um, I just want to point out, right, so these are people who, like us, are on their own school boards and now they're going to be on another board as well. Um, I, and I, I appreciate that work because the Westchester Putnam School Board Association, uh, provides really valuable, um, uh, advocacy on the part of public school districts as well as a really tremendous support, um, for school districts. I've, I've taken advantage of their, um, some of their leadership meetings and I, I appreciate all the work that they do. And so, um, that's what we're voting on. All right, so, um, this is not, this is, this can.
Not a roll call.
It's not a roll call. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, so we're now at the end of our agenda and there's now the second opportunity for communication from the public and it's actually open to all school district matters.
Um, I just want to take a moment to, uh, thank Peggy and Michelle. I think it's really important that the community know that Peggy and Michelle and all board members um, made themselves available to speak with our high school students regarding policy thirty-four thirty. Um, and I was incredibly proud of our students and the way they approach our board members and, and speaking and asking eloquent questions, um, and seeking feedback and seeking answers and seeking understanding. Um, it's all the things that we work on in the school and, and how we communicate when we might not see things exactly the same way. So, um, I want to appreciate, I appreciate both of you for coming in and doing that. And I know the whole board supported them. They happened to be available to come in and speak with the students. And I want to state how incredibly proud I am of your children, um, in the way that they presented themselves at that meeting, um, to ask some very difficult questions. Um, and I think that you gave them thorough answers, um, that they, they needed. And, and I was impressed at how many students showed up voluntarily, gave up their lunch. Um, whether they didn't eat or brought their lunch and came in late, um, they were there to be sure that their voices were also heard. So thank you for that.
And I'm going to thank Julia for giving us the opportunity to come and talk to them because it was really very valuable. I appreciate it. Um, any other comments? Right, um, board of applause. Um, well, I want to thank, I want to thank the P T A, um, Bill Coleus for organizing the P T A forum last night that I attended with Ezra. Ezra had a theme, I think, that's why he's not here tonight. Um, it was really, um, early on, I had a really productive meeting with Dr., with Mr. Albano and Lauren and Bill. And at the end of that meeting, Bill was like, well, what can P T A do? What can they do? At the time, I was like, well, you know, I think after this happens, I mean, we still need this. I was like, after this happens, I think we should have people come together. Like, I think we need to give people a chance to, to, to reconnect. But when I thought about it a little bit more and felt like there was really, um, you know, in collaboration with others, really the opportunity, uh, we needed an opportunity for there to be more back and forth than a board meeting allows. Um, I was really impressed. I reached out to Bill, I think on like a Thursday, a night Thursday. He had sent out the email and he arranged it with Butterfield Library and he, he, um, held it and it was really clear, um, that the P T A really wanted to, you know, work in partnership with the school district. And I really appreciated everybody, you know, like a lot of people, twenty people plus came and I spent an hour and a half on a weekday night and I, I really appreciated everybody's, you know, time. And, you know, there was a lot to, um, to listen to and learn from. And so I really, I really appreciate that.
I just wanted to, uh, we're all, we're always broken records during concert season, but spring concert season. I attended the high school, um, music and they were, it was amazing. I mean, it's, you know, and we hear the comment, Mr. Albano was there as well, um, that it's such a, the talent that comes out, the large talent when you're sitting there watching that, you know, the chorus sing and the, and the band play. It's for such a small school is really impressive, so I'm excited. I've got an eighth grader, so having a ninth grader next year, it'll be exciting to, uh, see him take part in that. Thank you to you and all your staff for the amazing things they do.
Definitely entering ring with the part of the school year, I looked at my calendar today and I have like something like, I have it every night. There's award time, concerts and dinners for valedictorian and salutatorian. There's actually, there's, um, this has been a super hard time for the district. I mean, one of the things I did try to say in one of the board's communication, um, is, uh, you know, figuring out ways to communicate because there, there certainly are, I think, you know, some potentially, uh, maybe it won't be so difficult, but challenging sorts, maybe not difficult decisions at that point, but certainly challenging circumstances. But I think there's always really an enormous amount to celebrate. I think that we have a lot to look forward in the district. And so hopefully we can move to those, um, messages as well. Um, so I'm going to move to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.